Monday, March 11, 2013, South Bend Common Council is now in session. Reverend Sylvester Williams with the invocation.
I'd like the record to reflect that I'm not Tony Slaker on your bulletin, your minutes, from Sylvester Williams, and I'm in his place this evening. I'd like to invoke the presence of the Lord into this meeting to be guided by His Spirit, that we may be blessed by the knowledge of these elected officials. We pray for wisdom, O Lord, in making decisions. We pray for courage in implementing those decisions for the people. We pray for success of reaching the common good and the common goal. And Lord will be so careful to give you the thanks. In Christ's name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good morning, read the roll please. Mr. Scott. Mr. Henry Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Dr. Furlick.
Here.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Mr. Furlick.
Present.
President Dieter.
President Mr. Woody.
All nine present.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 25, 2013, meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved to sign Derek Dieter, David Varner.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as a second?
Motion in a second, all favor of that.
Aye.
In the opposition. Under Special Business First, announcement. Beginning this meeting and every council meeting thereafter, the 14th floor administration will designate someone who will be representing the 14th floor, and tonight, Chief of Staff, Mike Schmull. I don't know that. Thank you very much, sir. Next, we will proceed to spreading of record. Thank you, President Woody.
At this time, a motion would be appropriate, once you have read into the record, the appointments for the five listed boards or commissions, as well as the standing committees for 2013, including the citizen members.
All right. The council appointment to the Sentry Center Board of Managers are Dennis Andres Jr., Michael Nieses, Valerie Shea, and David Varner. At this point, we do not have a historic preservation commission appointee. The Human Rights Commission appointee is Mohammed Shabazz. The Redevelopment Commission appointees are David Varner and Valerie Shea. And the Urban Enterprise Association is Pang Yin Lee, or Amy Lee.
And then the 11 standing committees are as posted in the office of the city clerk. So a motion to have the spread of record in the official record of the Common Council this day.
Motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor of the spreading of the record.
Aye.
In the opposition.
Thank you. We'd also like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 325. Would you like to stand up? Who will be speaking tonight on the history of the Weebos from the Boy Scout Troop?
Yes.
No, I'm... All right. Thank you. Let's proceed to Resolution 1321. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana declaring the month of March 2013 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of South Bend, and commends IU South Bend's Disability Support Service for all of their services.
Hello, my name is Karen White. I'm a council member at large, and I'm so happy to present this resolution to the South Bend Common Council. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Jim Hassy, Ann Dray, and Driver, and other representatives from IU South Bend to join me at the podium. And again, I'm so pleased to present this resolution. Whereas the South Bend Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, notes that this July 26, will mark the 21st anniversary of an enactment into law of Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, which aims to give all people the opportunity to live with dignity and achieve their dreams. And whereas the Common Council recognizes that today, there are approximately 50 million Americans living with disabilities, with 80% of the people who take on the role of primary helper to persons with disabilities, being relatives, and nearly half of that number living with the person who has a disability. And whereas the Common Council notes that the economy has been especially hard on individuals with disabilities, with approximately 16.1% of all disability Americans being unemployed. And whereas the Common Council further notes that the Indiana Governor's Council for People with Disabilities works to advance independence, productivity, inclusion of people with disabilities in all aspects of society, through planning, evaluation, collaboration, education, and advocacy. And whereas 90% of Indiana's population has a disability, this year, the Governor's Council theme is Community Connections, which focus on a fully connected, livable community with appropriate housing, supportive and accessible community services, and physical and environmental features, which fosters independent living with IU South Bend's Disability Support Services, DSS, being a great local example of their commitment to individuals with disabilities. Now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend on the 11th day of March 2013 as follows. Section 1. On behalf of all the citizens of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council hereby declares the month of March as Disability Awareness Month, and urges all of our residents, governmental office officials and employees, to celebrate the many contributions individuals with disabilities have made and continue to make to our community and to our country. Section 2. The South Bend Common Council publicly honors and thanks IU South Bend's Disability Support Services, DSS, under the direction of Dr. Jim Hassy, for their ongoing dedication and commitment to ensuring that students with disabilities have equal opportunity to participate in, contribute to, and benefit from all universities' programs, services, and activities. Section 3. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the South Bend Common Council and approval of the law. I do ask for your support, and I would like at this time to see if Dr. Hassy and, and maybe Driver would like to add comments at this time.
Thank you, Karen. This is Driver down here on the floor, so I don't think he's going to be speaking. Maybe not, I don't know. Thank you, Karen, and thank you to the council for the recognition of Disability Awareness Month. Our students at IU South Bend are a valued and highly successful group and members of our university community. And while Ann and I have the most direct responsibility for ensuring that they have the equal access to the university programs and services, it really is a university effort and the responsibility of our entire university community to ensure that they are included and that they do have the opportunity to be successful. And similarly, in our South Bend community, it is the responsibility of all of us to recognize the presence of our fellow citizens with disabilities and to ensure that they do have the opportunity to live, to work, to contribute to our community. So again, I thank the council for the recognition of Disability Awareness Month and our fellow citizens with disabilities.
Thank you. Can we get your address for the record, please?
My home address is 1303 East Washington Street, South Bend.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this? See no one from opposition council.
Move ahead to adoption by acclamation of this resolution.
Second. All in favor. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Driver? Perfect name for a guy, Dogger. Okay.
Report of city offices. If you don't have any, now may have a motion resolved in committee. So...
Second.
All in favor. Aye. In the opposition.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and a public hearing. Additional rules governing this session of the Common Council meeting is available if you'd like to have a copy. As we move through the committees of hold, council members will hear from the petitioner. We will have questions to ask of the petitioner as it pertains to our bill that is before us. The council will take action and make a recommendation to the full council for official action. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Woody to please give second reading to Bill 13-12.
I'm a hearing honorability, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending section 20-20 of Article 1, Chapter 20, Vehicles and Traffic of the South Bend Municipal Code Addressing Safety Regulations When Passing Bicycles.
Thank you. The Health and Public Safety Committee held a hearing committee meeting on substitute bill 13-12. We send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, is there a petitioner? As if you state your name and address, please.
Sure. Gavin Furlick, 1109 Dewey Avenue. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you to Tim Scott, Valerie Shea, for co-sponsoring this bill. Also say a big thanks to Bike Michiana Coalition and everyone who came out to support this today. They do a lot of really outstanding work in motorcycle and cycling safety in the City of South Bend. This bill is primarily about safety. It just encourages safe behavior between drivers and cyclists. And before, I invite someone from Bike Michiana Coalition up to speak. We're going to hear from Chief Teachman regarding enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the council for this opportunity to address you this evening. In the interest of full disclosure, I stand before you not only as your Chief of Police, but a cyclist. Not as often as I like, but I enjoy bicycling. For recreational purposes, for fitness and for wellness, with cardiovascular activity, good for distressing, and also appreciate it as an alternative means of transportation, using human power transportation rather than burning process fossil fuel. So with that disclosure, I say that, as your Chief of Police, I encourage you to pass this bill. I believe that it will give us a platform for enforcement. By way of education first, only when we recognize noncompliance, perhaps through a educational program, public service announcements, media broadcasts, and perhaps a roadside educational session with a motorist. When we recognize that there'll be noncompliance, then only then I suspect that we'll be issuing traffic infraction notes. There's a minimal intrusion on the liberties of motorists to simply yield the three feet. I think that's easily measurable by most police officers. But I think the upside to encourage this mode of transportation for the recreation and fitness and wellness and alternative transportation that I spoke to, we should be encouraging this activity by providing a safe environment for those people that choose that activity. And thank you.
Next, I'd like to hear from Judy Lee from the Bike Michiana Coalition.
Thank you. My name is Judy Lee, 66841 Walnut Road, Waukerton. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and thank you for considering this very important law for our city. I am president and founding member of the Bike Michiana Coalition, which is a local bicycle advocacy organization whose purpose is to promote, educate, and advocate bicycle use and safety. And we all recognize the need for safety education and for motorists and bicycles to be able to share our roads. This continues to be an ongoing effort with the three-foot law as a basis. The three-foot law would provide the basis for public education concerning the minimum safe distance for passing bicycles. Most motorists may simply think to avoid contact with a bicycle is all that is required. Often, however, the danger of passing too close, frequently, a bicyclist may have to swerve in order to avoid an unexpected object rolling in front of them or running in front of them, a pothole, a glass, or any sudden movement. Enforcement was well addressed eloquently by Chief Teachman. Currently, there are 22 states that have adopted the three-foot passing law with seven states pending, according to National Traffic Safety Administration. South Bend has the opportunity to be one of three cities in Indiana, including the Indianapolis Marion County and Fort Wayne, to adopt the law, and we would be the first up in our region. Passage of this law demonstrates South Bend's effort to promote safety of cyclists and encourage mutual respect for all users of our roads. We will boost our status as a bicycle-friendly community and decrease the risk of bicycle injuries and, God forbid, bicycle fatalities. This is the time before the bike season gets underway to demonstrate our commitment to share the road every light pulse, and we urge you to pass this law. Thank you very much.
That is your formal presentation. Before we move to the public hearing portion, council members, if you have any questions of the petitioner as pertains to substitute bill 13-12. Any questions from council members? Councilman Dieter?
Just a question, I don't know if you had time to find out in these other communities where this ordinance was passed, if there was a reduction in vehicle and bicycle accidents?
No, we're not aware of any necessarily study in Fort Wayne or Indianapolis since this law has passed.
Okay. So you don't know if that's had any effect on the safety of people since it was passed?
I would think that encouraging safe behavior would have an effect over the safety of people, but again, no statistical data.
But no data for that.
Councilman E. Davis?
Yes, I know that you have taken the signage piece of it out, but is there any consideration to adding that back in, for at least having some more signage around the city? Because I think that's a great piece of public awareness that throughout the city that we could have signage signs indicating these kind of issues.
I think Bike Michiana Coalition does an outstanding job promoting us as a bike-friendly community. However, when we took a look at other communities related to this specific law, signage related to this specific law wasn't that prevalent, so we didn't feel it was necessary. However, promoting additional signage that, you know, share the road signage, things like that, that promote us as a bike-friendly community, I think is a great effort.
When you saw what others did, what did they have on their signs?
Typically, it was just signs entering a community saying it was a bike-friendly community.
But they didn't say anything regarding the particular rules? Now, do we already have something that says that in this community? So you said that basically our signs cover what the other communities already had?
But Bike Michiana Coalition continually works to promote cycling and promote signage, so I could see such, I could potentially see signage growing through the Bike Michiana Coalition.
Did their cities fund that signage in those areas, or did that come through private companies or private organizations?
I'm not sure in other communities.
Any additional questions? Thank you. We'll now move into the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of substitute bill 13-12? If so, we ask that you come to the podium now, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tim Maher. I'm a partner at Barnes &amp; Thornburg, Richmond, 600 First Source Bank Building, 100 North Michigan. This ordinance would be, we see as a quality of life, helps the city leverage its existing investment in what's been known as the South Bend Bike Ways, a system of bike lanes and bike paths that we, under prior administrations, have been able to assemble into what is now a recognized bikeway, which will extend, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future into Michigan. As has already been mentioned, South Bend has been recognized as a bike-friendly community. It's a great economic development tool for us as a city, and we're trying to differentiate ourselves for potential investors from different communities who don't have that designation. We're one of only a handful in the state of Indiana, and fewer as you broaden the geographic scope of your inquiry as to where you might want to locate your business for investment purposes. We also think that this statute would be a great educational tool as we try and, as a member of the Bike Michiana Coalition, I'm also involved in trying to educate the citizenry about these great new resources that we have and to encourage cycling within our community. We'll have public service announcements. We already put on bike safety classes at schools. We're going to put one on at the center for the homeless. South Bend Parks has signed up to put on a couple, and we've done one at the YNCA already. If we have this tool, it's much easier to talk to both drivers at schools and parents of kids and the cyclists themselves, to talk to them about having a three-foot rule. What you think is a safe passing distance and I think is a safe passing distance might be different, because I can tell you from experience as a cyclist, that what some people think is a safe passing distance wouldn't come anywhere near my interpretation of that. When asked, you were asked about how much data there was to back this up, or if there was any. DOT does their research and produces a report every two years. The Indy rule wasn't passed until 2011. That data may come out later, but it won't be aggregated until this year. So I don't know when we'll see that. But Mayor Greg Ballard, when speaking about how Indianapolis implemented their bikeway system, said, "We've added bike lanes and expanded our greenways to better connect residents to jobs, neighborhoods, and green amenities. These improvements are important and attracting a new generation of talent." And I think as a lifestyle issue and as a quality of life issue, it's something that would help advance everybody in South Bend who's trying to raise the level of active citizenry that we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak in support? I'm going to ask everyone that's wishing to speak in support of substitute bill 13-12, you come to the podium at this time.
President.
Yes.
Do you want to time?
Yes. Five minutes. Five minutes. First speaker.
Mr. President, members of the Common Council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, or this evening. I just want to, very briefly, bring to your attention the Indiana Driver's Manual.
Sir, what is your name and address?
Officer Paul Taylor.
Thank you.
51590 Bridgewater Court, South Bend. I don't live in South Bend, but I've worked in South Bend, and I've worked here for 33 years. And in those 33 years, I've spent nearly all of my trips back and forth to work riding my bicycle. I don't ride when the streets are slippery, but when they're not slippery, I'll be riding here on my bike. And I wanted to bring to your attention, the Indiana Driver's Manual is a wonderful manual. If you have trouble sleeping at night, I would suggest you spend a few minutes reading this manual. And what I want to point out is on page 68, there's a section on sharing the road with other vehicles. Emergency vehicles, school buses, motorcycles, bicycles, slow-moving vehicles, stationary utility vehicles. But on the bicycle section, I've underlined it here, highlighted, if you may be able to see this, what it says is, "Drivers may pass a cyclist only when there is a safe amount of room beside the bicyclist, three-foot minimum, and when there is no danger from oncoming traffic." So the reason I bring this to your attention is you're not really, you're not really breaking new ground here. It's already in the driver's manual. It does not have the teeth of the law, which your ordinance will forgive it, but it is an accepted practice with the three-foot minimum. And I'm happy to see that South Bend, I believe, will pass this and will join 20-some other states and two other Indiana cities in forging this new ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Atkins, 528 West Angelo Boulevard. Thanks for hearing me out today. So I am a lead, the American Lead Certified Bicycle Safety Instructor, along with several of the other BMC Board members, and also a Bike Michiana Coalition Board Member. And so, to me, this is all about awareness. As an active cyclist and motorist, it's all about awareness that there should be some passing distance and a way to enforce it. Myself, being on the road hundreds of miles a week cycling, a few years ago, I was traveling in Salt Lake City, and I had somebody too close. And, you know, so honestly, I do the same thing, and without sort of that measure, like, they stopped me a little bit later and, you know, informed me that, you know, safe passing distance. So I think everybody gets in a hurry and kind of asks, "We're too close," and I think this is a good measure. It makes it enforceable, and it's kind of follows along with our brand certification for bike-friendly city.
Hello, my name is JV Peacock, and I reside at 32491 Coyuta Heights Drive, Niles, Michigan. I also operate Outpost Sports on Eddie Street, and I'm delighted to be here tonight because this is a culmination of five years of the Bike Michiana Coalition of trying to bring forward the three-foot law in the City of South Bend. Judy Lee has done a magnificent job trying to make you understand, and we think you understand now, how important this is. The BMC has at its roots the safety of bicyclists in South Bend, and we have spent a lot of time, and believe it or not, we donate a lot of money to the City of South Bend for not only striping, but for signage. So we will move forward with you on this, and it's as important for us, for people to understand this, as it is for you. Thank you for your time.
My name is Yatiz Joshi. I'm the president of GTA Containers, Inc. Only business in South Bend is a bike-friendly business. I'm also chairman of the board for Bike the Bank, the vision of Ruby is very clear, where we bring all the community and families together, ride the bicycle on one Sunday evening, May 19. If there's a value of life, and if there's a value of... If there's a value of life, and if there's a value of property, then three-foot law is a common sense, that everybody should be physical, everybody probably should be separate. The shared world, every life counts. The tragedy happened last year, but the only kind of tragedy that happened that the road runs through everybody, not only the motorists, motorcycles, bicycles, pedestrians, everybody. So things are changing. The bicycles is getting more and more healthy, more and more popular. People ride the bikes for their work. The gas prices so high, to encourage the people to ride the bicycle, and by, South Bend is a bike-friendly city. We have brown marines. Hopefully, very soon we'll be silver marines, and soon we'll be gold marines. So having the three-foot law is just common sense, that everybody should be physical and ride and use the roads. I hope councilor are able to pass this, go with the unanimous decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to those individuals who are present who would like to speak in opposition to substitute bill thirteen twelve. Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing portion is now closed. Council members, what is your pleasure?
Make ready for the motion. We send, sorry?
Substitute bill.
Substitute bill.
Thirteen twelve.
Thirteen twelve to full council, favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a move in second? And all those in favor of the motion, might hear your vote? And those opposed? The motion carries. Substitute bill thirteen dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boardy, will you please give second reading to bill zero-eight dash thirteen, please?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article eleven entitled Block Party Regulations.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The public works and public vacation met this afternoon, and we bring bill zero-eight dash one-three to the full council with a favorable report.
Thank you.
Is I could add to that? The committee report also had an amendment, which I'll read into the record.
That is correct.
At this time, on page two, section fourteen dash sixty-four, paragraph B, after the phrase Form nine-nine DEZ, we add the new language with copies also being filed with the office of the city clerk. Need a motion to that effect?
Is there a move?
Second.
Is there a move in second? All those in favor of amendment to bill zero-eight dash thirteen, as read, please give me your vote. Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill zero-eight thirteen has been amended. At this time, we'd like to hear from the presenters, submit an address, please.
My name's Tim Scott, seven-one-First Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. Firstly, I would like to thank Dave Varner for the improvement on the amendment. Thank you, Dave. What we're proposing here today is to make an amendment on block party regulation. Basically, what this is, is allowing nonprofits to file a copy of their IRS documentation certifying their five-one-C-three, allowing them to exempt from the permitting fee for block parties. The idea of the block parties were to allow communities, such as nonprofits, and to bring the communities together and to build stronger communities, and using the vehicle of block parties to do so. So with that in mind, some nonprofits do have limited budgets, and this would allow them to go ahead with those type plans. That's about it.
Council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner at this time?
Yes.
Council member Henry Davis?
Thank you. When you begin to talk about limited budgets, is there a process that allows these nonprofit organizations to tap into resources that will allow them to cover the cost for a block party, that's what they choose to do?
I'm not sure of any, aware of any type of grants or funding for that. And what would, I think some nonprofits would be allowed for some grants and some wouldn't, just depending on the grant situation.
How much is the fee?
Fifty dollars.
It's fifty dollars right now?
Fifty.
So every time you sign up a block party, you have to pay fifty dollars?
Correct.
Now, what does this particular, this application, this fifty-dollar pay for? What does it pay for?
Any fees pays for administering that permit, plus allowing city workers to go out and drop cones or barriers, block off two ends of a street for a block.
Okay. How about the equipment that's being used to block off the streets? Perhaps the cones, or even the, I guess, the barriers?
Right.
In case those things get damaged, who funds that? Who takes care of that? Someone may be even taken.
I'm not really sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council member Dieter?
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Would we be able to include a counting mechanism? Because what we learned at the committee, the whole board of works, really doesn't have any mechanism of finding who didn't pay, why they didn't pay, and if somebody's paying fifty dollars, either their bookkeeping is very bad or something else is wrong. Are we able to put in this amended ordinance a way to calculate that Derek Dieter came in, I paid fifty bucks, or how are the other people coming in? Because of the number of block parties, the funding that should have been there doesn't add up.
There is a section proposed, fourteen sixty-five, that requires the clerk of the Board of Public Works to electronically file with Mr. Boardy's office a summary of all applications approved or disapproved, by listing the date that they applied, the type of block party, since it's both residential and non-residential, the location, the fee charged, and the amount of fee waived by the last business day of each calendar year. And that was, again, to formulate a process, which is currently not in place. And if I could just supplement what Council member Scott stated earlier, part of the fee, Council member Davis, also covers each application is referred automatically to the police department, the fire department, and the street department before it's approved.
And just to add on to that, from experience, it's not like there is any deposit or anything lost if all the cones or whatever disappear. So, and that's something we might need to look at, too.
Council member Davis?
Sure. Could I suggest that maybe we just kill all block party fees, whether you're a part of a nonprofit or not?
If I could respond to that just briefly, the council has to be very careful that they do not make an arbitrary or capricious decision. If you recall, back in approximately three years ago, there was a cost-benefit analysis provided to the city council at that point by the then-public works director, Gary Jalot. And at that point, the estimate was approximately a hundred and sixty-one dollars per block party, the actual cost to the city of South Bend for the reviewing process, as well as the delivery of the items that are necessary. The past city council that approved the hundred and twenty-five dollars for a non-residential and the fifty dollars for a residential was to come up with a fair and realistic cost to help offset some of those out-of-pocket costs. So, again, to waive those costs entirely, I think, would not be in the best interest of the city of South Bend in regulating this.
Well, my suggestion is, is that if we can do it for one, we can do it for the other. If I can get my fees, but obviously, I need to be a part of a nonprofit. But a nonprofit business in San Jo County and even in South Bend, we have a lot of them. Probably more than we probably can handle, but we have a lot of them. And so, because the fifty dollars is going towards recouping the cost for the actual block party, why are we taking dollars out of the budget, or potentially taking dollars out of the budget to service the community, to make sure that people are safe and the streets are being blocked off, just because they're a nonprofit? It's only fifty dollars, but obviously, it helps out.
I'm not sure of the history before, how many were actually coming down. I think a part of the raise was nonprofits or just people, block parties, according to Marsh Pauls, what from, just neighborhood get-togethers, meeting people, to a person just wants to have a party, you know, it's one house within a block. And I think maybe some of the other council members can speak to that, but that was my understanding of why there was a lease on fees, and there was people coming into town, just one house, they come in and set up a block party. So there was some process to it and some fee for that.
At this time, I cut Council member Dieter off. I think he had another question. We go to Council member Furlik, Council member Davis, and I wanted to make sure that Council member Henry Davis, all your questions were addressed.
I'm fine, because we're going to come back and get off, and get off to the panel.
To comment?
Sure.
Council member?
I just want to make sure if this does pass, that the accountability is in there because it wasn't in the past. And related to your question, I believe, when this first came up, we only had over a hundred and twenty parties that people were just, "I want to have a party, I'm going to block the street," and that's where all the costs came, the police having to come, so on and so forth, so that's why we put that in there. And that cut down on it, but again, I don't know, I guess, since their accounting is very weak, they didn't tell us how many nonprofits or profits, regular neighborhood people did those, correct?
Correct.
So I'm glad you're putting in accountability aspect, because that is horrible.
Yeah, and thank you again to Dave Varner for offering that. It goes to the clerk, so there is some other accountability to that. But this is being supported by Marshall Pauls, who, in the street department that runs us, she cannot be here today to speak in favor or support, so.
Council member Furlik?
As Tim knows, I'm against granting any waivers. So I have to ask you, if I'm having a block party, for Catholics, which I happen to be, why should Protestants, Jews, and Muslims pay for my block party, which they're doing, in essence, because you're using city services? I think that violates a tax fairness issue.
Basically, the amendment is non-denominational. It's five-one-three-C. It doesn't regulate anything based on religious or anything else.
I realize that, but in the end, that's what you're doing. You're allowing on all taxpayers' money to have my particular beliefs, and you're paying for my party, whereas many of these people may not have, believe in what I believe in. So I think you're supporting, I think you're picking and choosing, and I think it can even lead to the Dollar Store problem we had. And I know that Kathy disagrees with that, but when you start picking and choosing winners and losers, which absence of waivers does, I think everybody should have a waiver. That's, I just want you to answer that question. That's fine.
Well, Dr. Furlik, I think everybody's a winner, but to the most part, like I said again, it's not based on religion or anything. You can have a nonprofit around rescuing hamsters, and that has nothing to do with religion or anything like that, so.
I'm going to move over. Thank you. Council member Oliver Davis, and then Council member Shay.
Now, when it comes down to police protecting, so that the block parties, the system is a fee, like the hundred and twenty, the hundred dollar fee?
Right, that's just to review the application itself, whether there is a public safety concern with regard to ingress or egress, that would be denied if there was a concern with regard to that. But if there's any security at that block party that's a private cost, that is not a cost that is all addressed by this ordinance.
Well, that's filed as special events, which is a whole other angle of this.
So basically, this has nothing to do with regarding security, police, fire, anything else, public safety at all?
Correct.
This has just, all needs to do with bringing cones out to the location, putting them there and everything. They would still bring them out this time, and the volunteers would put them together.
Correct.
There would not be any issues that will affect the safety of our citizens at these events.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Council member Shay?
Thank you, Chairman White. I will make two points. The first is, Tim, I will support this. I know there's a number of neighborhood associations that host block parties on an annual basis, and it certainly does a lot of good in terms of community living, so I think that that is a step in the right direction. And just for the record, as far as legislative issues go, I want to make a point here with Dr. Furlik's statement about separation of church and state. If we look at Indiana law and the fact that now we have a pretty expansive school voucher program that takes tax dollars and funds private religious education, I think that if you were to make an issue about separation of church and state, perhaps you might want to look at the voucher program.
Thank you. We're going to move right to Dr. Varner, and then we're going to go to the public portion.
I just want to make sure that we clarify the difference between the block party, which is a small event, to be the larger event, which is something that happens on a football weekend or something like that, and requires not only barriers but police protection.
Correct.
But the one thing I got to understand is, the board of public works, from my time as chairman of that committee, always approves these, so I don't understand why we can't have some sort of an accounting. It says very clearly, as you go through permits, it says permits and it says block parties granted or denied, and it's there. I mean, if there's something more to that, then we have an inappropriate, we have an inconsistent system, which probably needs to be addressed.
And again, I met with the interim city attorney this morning, and she is going to work with the attorney for the board of public works to make sure that we have that accountability.
Because it's there, I think we just aren't.
I would like to thank council members for your questions on the petitioner. At this time, we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak to the amended version of bill zero-eight dash thirteen? Seeing? Do ask if you come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Okay, so we're speaking right now in favor of, I mean, I think the block parties.
Name and address for the record.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten, two oh five, South Bend, Indiana four-six-six. I think block parties are a good tool to help bring the community together. Obviously, we're kind of the melting pot here, so, you know, it's really nice to get people together. I just want to make sure that if they're having a block party down the street, and I'm annoyed by it, if I call the police, is that considered a nuisance call?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing no one, so anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed. We move to the public, the council members. I'm going to disturb the council member, Henry Davis. Any comments or?
Sure, I think that's not fair nor is it equitable. I've talked about the fees, Kathy explained us the fee structure and scale, how much it costs, even get these things going, the amount of manpower and man work as the city offices designate a particular block party. I've been at many block parties within the Steppen District, and each time has gone, everyone has had to pay. If they didn't pay, they found a grant through the NRC, which works with neighborhood organizations who are nonprofit, to make sure that cost is covered. As a matter of fact, they come up with almost two-hundred dollars to do the block party and provide food and other things. I think we're just providing another layer of government to something that should not exist. The other thing that I'm having a real problem with is that we're separating nonprofit from neighborhood and neighborhood organizations. So nonprofits is part of our budget each year. They know what they're going to do every year. They have a submitted budget to wherever they get their money from. Fifty dollars is not much for them to put aside of their budget to make sure that budget is being met, but also that the block party will be taken care of. I find it, I just find, you know, we have, for instance, the Triple Inn, they have a number of block parties or parties, and so with the amount of people that they draw, is it difficult for them to pay a fifty-dollar labor fee? I just, I don't get that. I think that everyone should pay. It's fifty dollars, it's not two-hundred dollars, it's not three-hundred dollars. We took offense earlier to Notre Dame, and they're block parties, because they're calling them block parties. They don't say special events, they say block parties. They don't pay, and we haven't had any record of them paying. So now, because Notre Dame is a nonprofit, now we're going to say Cape Realty and Eight Street Commons, I don't know who's showing up to sign the paperwork, but those guys make a lot of money. They're going to plan about paying fifty dollars, or they're going to subsidize those who don't need to be subsidized. Yes, block parties are for people to get together within neighborhood areas. The block parties I've been to, we definitely have police presence there, all the time. Now, I don't know if that's a matter of being west of the river versus east of the river, but what I do know is that every block party that I've been into, they have to have security there. So I don't know what we did all saying that security is not necessary, that we don't have a security presence. So I want to support this because... So I don't want to support this because it's too subjective. It doesn't outline a clear path. If we need more money in our budget to make sure that our city workers are getting to pay what they need and deserve, the equipment being taken care of, the cones are going to be out there, the equipment won't disappear, or folks may have to find more, then you shouldn't as though have a block party paying $50. This is a period. NRC has money, they give grants out, $200. Sign up for a couple before, let's set up a neighborhood association to have a block party. And they don't. So, I rest.
Thank you. Any other comments that councilmembers would like to make at this time? Councilmember Furlic?
I'd like to just go on record that I only endorse, like Henry, the concept of block parties. Good neighbors make good neighborhoods, okay? But there should be no exceptions, and a nonprofit should pay, should not be exempt from paying a waiver. We should all be responsible for that. And it's not right to subject all the taxpayers to your particular block party.
If there's no other comments from councilmembers, I would like to entertain a motion.
Move for favorable recommendation?
Second.
It's the amended version.
Amended version of Bill 08-13. It's been, a motion has been made, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Name.
Dr. Varner?
Name.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Well, this is a clerk voting, four to four.
Um, yes, it is.
Aye.
Five to four.
Amended version of Bill 08-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion, the rise of the committee, the whole report back to the full council.
So move to second.
Has been moved to second, and all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Council, this is now session 340, third reading of 1312.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending section 20-20 of Article 1, Chapter 20, Vehicles and Traffic of the South Bend Municipal Code, Addressing Safety Regulations When Passing Bicycles.
A motion to amend, as it was in the committee of the hall.
So move to second.
All in favor of that? I'm in the opposition now, and motion for the amended version of 1312.
Move to pass 1312, amended version, second.
340. Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Passes 90 as amended. Thank you. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 11 entitled Block Party Regulations.
Make the motion to hear the amended version as it was in the committee of the hall.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Seeing now, now, may I have a motion for the amended version of 813?
Motion to defeat 813.
Second.
Roll, Mr. Wardy.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Nay. Dr. Furlic?
Name.
Dr. Varner?
Name.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Passes 90 as amended. Thank you. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 11 entitled Block Party Regulations.
Make the motion to hear the amended version as it was in the committee of the hall.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Seeing now, now, may I have a motion for the amended version of 813?
Motion to defeat 813.
Second.
Roll, Mr. Wardy.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Nay. Dr. Furlic?
Name.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Passes 90 as amended. Thank you. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 11 entitled Block Party Regulations.
Make the motion to hear the amended version as it was in the committee of the hall.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Seeing now, now, may I have a motion for the amended version of 813?
Motion to defeat 813.
Second.
Roll, Mr. Wardy.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Dr. Furlic?
Name.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Dieter?
Nay.
Two, three, five. Five nays, so it is defeated, five to four.
Like to make a motion to pass 813?
Yes, amended.
As amended.
Second. Okay, Dr. Furlic?
I'm voting against. Nay.
Okay. I changed colors here. Uh, Dr. Varner?
Nay.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
I support block parties with an aye.
Okay. President Dieter?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five ayes.
Proceed to resolution 1316, please.
The Z and A committee met today.
The first you read.
The resolution. The intent of you, like you don't.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the petition of the area board of zoning appeals for the property located at 2221 Prairie Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
Thank you very much. We happen to have a committee report today after we discussed the problems of the council.
The committee met today and sends to the full council favorable recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Mark Lyons of the building apartment, office, 25 South Lafayette Boulevard. This is a special exception request for 2221 Prairie Avenue, given public hearing at the February 6, 2013, meeting of the area board. This is a special exception request to replace Fire Station 5. Comes in unanimous, favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lyons? No, thank you. Presentant with a short synopsis.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Stephen Cox, Fire Chief of the South Bend Fire Department, 1222 South Michigan Street. We're here to request that the council approve our petition to allow us to demolish Fire Station 5 as it stands right now and go ahead and begin construction of the new building.
Great report. Any questions from the seats?
Yes. Could Chief just go over the dates for the public again about the times that you're planning to demolish and the times you're planning to have it all fixed?
Yes, the people's schedule currently is to demolish the current building on April 15 or about that date, and then begin construction immediately. And with the proposed schedule, we will have the new station completed and moved into by October 31st.
Thank you for that. Looking forward to it.
All right. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Your position?
In favor.
In favor of it?
Yes, sir.
You going to speak on it? Come on up.
Round 1238 Diamond, I'm in favor of it. I'm in the fire department. Every time I need it for my mother, for myself, they've been there. And any improvement they can get, give it to me.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone in opposition? Seeing, council?
I'm very much pleased, and I welcome this addition to 6th district. It's the closest fire station to my house, I can walk there, and so this is really great. So the neighbors are excited about this, and we're looking forward to that building being torn down and a new building coming together.
So is that a motion?
I'm so glad for it. I make a motion to adopt Bill 1316.
Second.
Motion to second, 340.
Uh, Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. 1319, please.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3340 Douglas Road, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a three-year real property tax abatement for Harrington Orthodontics.
Thank you. The community investment had a committee meeting today and discussed both the pros and the cons of this, and the results were?
We did. The results were favorable.
Thank you very much. Mr. Neiman?
Ladies and gentlemen of the common council, President Dieter, delighted to be here tonight. 3340 Douglas Road will be the future home.
Your official name and address, sir?
Excuse me. Andrew Neiman, 211 West Washington, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. 3340 Douglas Road will be the future site of the state-of-the-art orthodontic service location for Harrington Orthodontics. Harrington Orthodontics has been in South Bend for over 35 years. They wish to stay inside South Bend, and by doing so, will duplicate the office that they have in St. Joseph, Michigan. And if there's any questions that you find folks have at this time, I'd be happy to entertain.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Neiman?
Great report. Thank you, sir.
Anyone like to speak in favor? Opposition? Council?
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of resolution 1319.
Second.
Many thanks for continued investment in our community.
Second with thanks.
We have a motion and a second on that, clerk Wardy.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 1320.
Thank you, and I just want to make sure that I'm invited to Dr. Furlic's block party. Thank you.
1320, please, 1320.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1902 South Main Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for General Sheet Metal Works, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Furlic. You also talked about this today.
Yes, the community investment, the committee met today, and we send Bill 1320 forward with a favorable recommendation.
Hi, I'm Kevin Krugel, CPA. I partner with Krugel Law and Company CPAs here in South Bend, residing at 210 South Michigan Street here in South Bend. I've got with me John Ryle, CFO of General Sheet Metal Works. And basically, this project is to add manufacturing capacity at General Sheet Metal Works, a total investment of $1,730,000 in two phases, an $825,000 Trump 3030 CNC laser cutting machine, and the second phase is a CNC two-vendor machine manufactured by LBD Company. Along with that, there'll be a Davy role and a Trump elected press break, which brings the total project to $1,730,000.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions of the presenter? All right, thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Opposition? Council?
We just selected this, said congratulations. This is a wonderful movement in our 6th district, in our south side. We would like to continue to see growth and success for businesses, so we thank you.
Should I take that? Some motion?
Yes, motion to adopt.
Second.
It must be. Motion to have a second.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furlic?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shay?
Aye.
Dr. Furlic?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, 1322.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for an end to domestic violence and voicing its support to the reauthorization of the Federal Violence Against Women's Act.
The Health and Public Safety Committee had a committee meeting on Bill 13-22, and we send this bill to full call for with favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
If I could add, the amendment that was proposed in committee has been included in a substitute version of the spell on file with the city clerk, so we would need a motion to accept that.
So move.
A motion to second. To accept that, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you. Presenter?
Good evening, council and community. We have some representatives here from the YWC as well as St. Joseph County. It's been a long day. Family Justice Unit.
Do I have to write?
Justice Center, thank you. I'm sorry. And so what we're doing is we're going to talk about this resolution, but we're going to actually have them so well speak on it after the reading of it. Just some backgrounds from history with this particular piece of legislation has gone back before Congress several times in the last couple of decades to get it voted back in because it's an act. It's not necessarily a law or amendment. It's an act, so it has to be voted upon each number of 20 years apart, if I remember correctly. But in between those times, different things have come up, you know, to include different demographics within our country to make sure everyone feels safe and feels safe in this country and has a right to make sure that they report a violent crime that's against them. Whether it's been man versus woman, woman versus woman, or man versus man, everybody has the opportunity to report their violent crime and make sure that there is some prosecution and also restitution involved as well with those who are not being prosecuted. So this is a larger conversation that has happened with our national government. However, because of the representatives that are here, they're explaining to you who they are, there is always a need for conversation, direct conversation at the local level about some of these things and understanding where it actually fits and where it hits home at. Most of the time we talk about things at a macro level, but we are going to be able to talk about things at a micro level. And some of the services that are provided here, not only by the two entities that are here with me right now, but also by other entities as well that we come in, that we interface with on a regular basis. Whereas the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, acknowledges that recently a bipartisan shift, majority of the House of Representatives joined the United States Senate in approving reauthorization of the Violence Against Women's Act and sent it to the President for review and approval. And whereas the common council notes that unfortunately domestic violence affects all communities, with data showing that three women die each day from domestic violence, which clearly shows that the perpetrators of such violence should be brought to justice. And whereas the federal legislation would give a new powers to tribal courts to help protect Native Americans, Native women, where the statistics reveal that one in three are the victim of such crimes. And whereas the council recognizes that on February 28th, 2013, the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women's Act announced that 12.6 million will be made available and grants to 20 communities as a part of a new consolidated program designed to more effectively reduce daily violence. And whereas the council also notes that in 2004, the Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women identifies St. Joe County as one of 15 pilot sites nationally out of 400 applicants to receive federal finances, financial support to eradicate all forms of domestic violence. And the Family Justice Center of St. Joseph County located at 533 North Miles Avenue in South Bend, Indiana, serves as a one-stop health center for victims of domestic violence and their children, where providers from many organizations, domestic violence victims, services, prosecution, probation, law enforcement, medical services, civil legal assistance, counseling, and other community-based services are brought together under one roof. Whereas it is reported that in St. Joe County, police respond to approximately 8,000 domestic violence calls per year. Eight thousand. That means somebody repeatedly called because they need help, and probably more than five or six, or even 10. Well, the Department of Justice estimated that only 54% of the intimate partners' violence is reported to authorities, in that the victims come from all walks of life, income levels, races, and religions. Now, therefore, letter of resolve by the common council of the city of South Bend on 11th day of March, 2013. The common council calls upon the residents of South Bend, Indiana to work together to end domestic violence in our community. Section two. The council notes that soon the president will be signing into law recently approved by partisan reauthorization of the Violence Against Women's Act, which will span authorities seeking justice against perpetrators of these such crimes. Section three. The council pledges the support to many agencies in the city of South Bend who work on a daily basis providing assistance on crisis intervention, counseling criminal investigations, special care, prenatal counseling, and many highly trained volunteers, advocates, who work on a 24-hour SOS crime line. The police officers called to respond to domestic violence calls who are working to curb domestic violence locally, and in particular, the Family Justice Center in St. Joseph County. Section four. The council also acknowledges that the YWCA of North Central Indiana is a leading provider of domestic violence services, such as emergency shelter and services to approximately 1,500 women and children annually. Food, clothing, and search shelter, as well as the supportive tools which these individuals need to begin rebuilding their lives are examples of this agency. Section five. The resolution shall be in full force in effect from after its adoption by the common council and approved by the mayor. Counsel, I ask for your proclamation on this particular bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, do you have anybody else from the electorate who'd like to speak?
Yes, we do. And I'm going to allow the incumbent to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Serene Dale, 1731 Thornhill Drive, Director of the Family Justice Center of St. Joe County. Thank you so much for your support in reducing domestic violence in our city. The Family Justice Center is, and its partners, in the prosecutor's office, in the investigators from the South Bend Police Department, Mishawaka and St. Joe County are all under one roof at the Family Justice Center here in South Bend, along with social service advocates, civil legal services. And we are all committed to offering assistance and support to survivors and their children. This resolution sends a really strong message locally, in tune with the pulse of the rest of the country, since the president just signed the Violence Against Women's Act into law. This message is affirming to victims in our community, and it also shows that intimate partner violence is not tolerated in South Bend.
My name is Becky Calendar, and I am the project coordinator of the SOS program, which is a program of the Family Justice Center. And we would just like to say thank you for your support in this. We are honored to be entering our 40th year of providing services to victims in our county, to all victims of sexual violence, relationship violence, child sexual abuse, and stalking. And this is a very important acknowledgement of that work. So thank you.
Hello, Linda Beckley, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the YWCA North Central Indiana, 1102 South Fellow Street, South Bend, Indiana. I appreciate very much your expressing support of the passage of VAWA, which is very important though for us. Since 2011, when VAWA expired, we know that 2,600 women nationally lost their lives to domestic violence. VAWA, in fact, provides critical funding for some of the services that we provide at the YWCA, so we felt its reauthorization was very important. We provide services to 1,500 women and children each year who are fleeing domestic violence, who perhaps are addicted to substances and fleeing domestic violence, who are victims of sexual assault and are trying to move to a violence-free life. And we're not able to do it without the support of assistance from the government and from our community. On Friday, we sponsored a training for law enforcement for first responders. Senator will be asking the city of South Bend to support this project, which will be helping officers do screenings at victims' homes and to identify the cases which are most likely to result in another fatality. We know that here in our community, approximately four women each year lose their lives due to domestic violence. And we appreciate so much this important statement from all of you that you feel this is an important issue and that South Bend wants to take a stand of saying that this is not something that our community would prioritize. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Pontario. Mary Pontario. We're at 402 University Park Court in Mishawaka, Indiana. We're proud to work and do business in South Bend. And Indiana Quality Action is grateful that the LGBT community is specifically included in this resolution. We hope this encourages the creation of a culture where all people are to be people first, so all citizens can count on being treated with dignity and respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes your presentation? Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of this?
Jesse Davis, P.O., lot 10, 205, South Bend, Indiana. I grew up in a very abusive home, so I dealt with all kinds of violence from childhood, myself, my brothers, and my mother. And after 19 years of marriage, my mother did get out of it on her own. Since then, I've had nieces that were raped. My mother was raped here locally, and several instances of domestic violence on women. And things have came a long way. So I've had an opportunity to deal with some people at the YWCA, Special Victims Unit, some of the officers in South Bend and Mishawaka. So I just want to say, whatever you guys can do to help this issue, it should get a unanimous vote.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in favor? Anyone in opposition? See, done? Recommendation?
I also would like to, Mr. President, lend my support as a social worker who has worked in the area of domestic violence throughout my career, working, starting out on the hotline back in Alabama over 20 years ago, and throughout working with families who have experienced domestic violence and being at funerals, people who have died through domestic violence. I look forward to supporting this resolution tonight because it is important that we recognize how deadly this kind of a situation, you know, you look at even teenage young people who are even in middle school, you see, wherein as early as their relationships from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, where you see fighting and slapping. And being a father of two girls, this makes me very cautious as we look at that, as we see how they interact with each other, even through the different types of communication on Facebook or Twitter and everything, which leads into physical violence. So this is something that we have to address, not only here, but also as our young people grow, and even elderly violence too. So thank you so much for that.
So that's a recommendation for favor?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept amended version of Bill for adoption, Resolution 13-22.
Yeah, a second on that by Tim Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Furlik?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Oh, is that Mr.-
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlik?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye, again.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
And President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 1323.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of scrap metal junk dealer recycling operation licenses for calendar year 2013 pursuant to section 4-51 of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you, Dr. Varner. You spoke about this earlier today in your committee, didn't you?
Yes, sir. We have a meeting of the Personal Finance Committee this afternoon. And with this adoption, if this is adopted with these last two junk dealers, all of the junk and scrap dealers in South Bend will have met the requirements for licensing and security that's been set forth by the council. So this comes with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Court Boardy, you'll be the presenter?
Yes, as Dr. Varner stated, 12 of the 14 applicants were approved at the last council meeting. These were the last two. They have gotten into compliance, so the recommendation in our office is to issue the license, to approve the issuance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Seeing none either. Counsel, recommendation?
Move that this be adopted.
Second.
Forty.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlik?
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Furlik?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. First reading on a bill 13.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 13 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 12 entitled Chronic Problem Property Regulation.
Mr. President, I move that this be sent to Health and Public Safety and the Residential Neighborhoods Committee to be set for second, third reading in public hearing on 3:25.
Second. The motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you. 1113.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-4.4, Subsection B.3, rem numbering certain sections of Chapter 6, Article 2, and adding a new remumbered Section 6-6.2, Certificate of Occupancy, to Chapter 6, Article 2.
Mr. President, move that this be sent to the Health and Public Safety Committee and be set for second, third reading in public hearing on 3:25.
Second. The motion and a second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And the opposition to that? Thank you. 1113.
First reading on a bill amending zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at 3801 West Western Avenue, Councilmatic District 2, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move this to the Airtime Commission.
Second.
The motion to second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And the opposition to that? Received unfinished business. First of all, the first thing, Councilmember Henry Davis asked to get some information from Mr. Neal on the status of all the city employees based on race, gender, I think by department. I think that was sent out to everybody from Mr. Neal, so thank you for that. And I'll let our council president, if there was another question that we had last week, unfinished business.
The information from the clerks at Board of Public Works with regard to block party, we got part of that information. We're working on the rest of it.
And there's another part of unfinished business probably that's been out for a while that I will talk with community development is regarding a breakdown of all the businesses from on the Western Avenue corridor. And we're, we still haven't got them. It's been a while. So again, I'll follow up and get that information to the council. Any other unfinished business from our members?
President Dieter, that was, the request was exactly that, but it was in light of the zoning on Western Avenue that allowed businesses to come in without going through the process of dealing with us. So obviously, there is some sort of like understanding that a particular area can be high or a certain type of development. So you can make sure that they understand that we're looking at zoning codes as well.
Mr. President?
Right.
At our, when we were interviewing the other day, the mayor had said that he was going to give us some information on the council regarding the TIF in terms of, when it comes to the vacant abandoned house, homes, and he was going to look at everything by district, the maps by district, in terms of all the homes by district, and then the TIF, but all, the whole list of questions that we asked him, that if we could point to the record of that day and have that turned over, because none of that information has been turned over to us yet.
Okay. I will forward that again to Mr. Smallen. Make sure we get that information.
Just as a clarification, I see that the council, on that section, new business, I mean old business, right? Do we bring up our other things under that section, or do we develop a new business?
If it's old, we bring it up under this. If it's new, we go to new.
I mean, the ethnic stuff is still-
Excuse me, can I?
That's old. Okay, well, ethnic, ethnic issue. There's still, a couple of things that regarding the New Energy area, I was asked on March 25th, 2013, at our meetings, we are going to be hearing an update regarding what the administration is in terms of the long-term plans. We have been looking forward to hearing what the continued long-term plan is in terms of either TIF dollars, COFAS dollars, or whatever, what are we going to do regarding homes there. Also, a very brief update on the legal status of the court case which pertains to New Energy and see where things are, how that relates to this matter. And all that will be dealt with there. And then also regarding the Health Department with New Energy, I met with the Health Department officials this past week, who shared with me that they are still working with neighbors who live near the New Energy plant. And so I've met up with them because we've been getting phone calls. And so they gave me a packet that they've been giving out to the different neighbors to explain to them how to clean the mold and other issues in their homes. And so that's what they told me that they are doing. And so Cofax is able to guess, too. So, he definitely is. So on March 23rd, we're going to be celebrating the last president, Cofax, on the 23rd, at 601 West Cofax, at 3:00 p.m. that afternoon. So we'd like to invite everybody there, and we will lay a wreath on his grave here in town. Thank you, sir.
Proceeds to new business. I'd like to make a motion to approve four appointments to the transfer board. Matthew Wilson, Amo Resnick, Oliver Davis Jr., and Antonius Snorger.
Technically, the motion is to accept the Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement, which each has provided to the city council, so that it can be signed by the council president and then referred to the Circuit Court and the Office State Court Counts in Indianapolis.
So, as I said, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you.
President Dieter?
Yes, sir.
Quite big here. Just bear with me, please. You had seen a newscast on AC57 talking about our mini-marks that are inside of South Bend in certain neighborhoods. And I've had the opportunity to discuss this with a media source, but also with organizations within the city that's looking to have a few community hearings and talks about mini-mark problems as it relates to proper or the lack of investment for development in areas, the poor food choice, the ongoing problems potentially with drug dealers, with the selling of illicit drugs, Viagra, tennis shoes that are not trademarked properly. It's just a whole laundry list of things that, and the conditions that people have to live in, or even going to cite some of these stores because of access to quality items that they really need or know they're close, so they're almost forced to patronize some of these businesses. We've had a conversation before about single-cell cigarette. I mean, the list goes on. There's been a few stores that have been shut down, but for some reason, they continue to reopen as if nothing has ever happened, and they continue to operate business as usual. I think it's time now to change the licensee agreement. I will be working with our council legal aid on changing licensee agreement. This has been a conversation that's been going on probably for the better part of three years, started with the Little Cell Neighborhood Association, which they are a part of the second district. And so it continues to grow. And the second district has their fair share. The fourth district has one in particular, I know on Howard Street, that continues to make the newscast. So I think this has a lot to do with development. I think it has a lot to do with education. I think it has a lot to do with health as well. And so I think that it needs to be tackled now, not later, and the structure of an agreement, a licensee agreement, that could potentially eradicate those who leach off of our communities, our neighborhoods, because it's not pretty, it's not fair, and it's not good, it's unjust. Quick question, really quick. Cell phones. There was some, a couple of years ago, there was a bill that was created that turned into ordinance that ended up on me, as about some corporate bad guy. Then we ended up getting his fine. I passed. I ended up voting for a bill because of the conflict that I was out there. However, I've noticed that cell phones are ever more present in council meetings than ever before. And I also happened to be the only one using it then, but now everyone seems to have one. Are we still enforcing that? Is that still an ordinance? I mean, it was your ordinance, President Dieter, so is that something that-
Who's violating that?
I don't know. You're not paying attention?
I'm asking you. You made the-
I mean, you're not paying attention is all over the, you didn't do the video. You violated-
You just brought it up.
You violated it?
Can I call a point order?
No, that's okay. I'm just asking- You are.
I know, but Yakul-
You are.
Point of order.
I just wanted to ask the council attorney, what's the rule presently on cell phones?
There is an ordinance that applies to all public bodies. That would be the Board of Public Works, down to the common council, with regard to electronic devices. Because we are in an area that can be captured by the city, the concern is to make sure that we're consistent with the open door law with regard to transactions that are taking place via iPad, via cell phones. This is something that we are reviewing currently with the city administration in light of the upgrades that have been made, but the law is still in effect.
So is there, is that a fee for violating? Am I correct? So, is there, is that a, is a fee for violating, am I correct? And who enforces that fee? I remember it was like twenty-five dollars a year, caught violating the law.
Uh, I believe that is.
Oh, I remember.
I believe that is true.
Yeah, I, I do remember, because I was made up to look like a bad guy. I just wanna make sure that we're consistent in our practices, and not, I think the law is taken back, and, and it's not faggot. I don't mind you using cell phones, to be honest with you, I think that it's just a part of our culture at this point, but what I do have a problem with is that one person can be singled out of the group, and may be a person that has, that's operating, you know, illegally, and then a law put against that person, then everybody else behind that person can do whatever they wanna do, and there's no consequence. That's my issue. Everybody, I think everybody needs to be treated equally and fairly here. My last point, um, I've had an opportunity, and I've been, obviously thinking about this, uh, for quite some time before I brought it to the public, um, it's probably about two weeks, we had a, I remember a, a, an African-American traditional, African-American church, uh, name of, greater St. John Mission Baptist Church going on Adams Street, and, um, very large church, um, we, we, we are traditional and, uh, have a, two services, so our, our current population is pretty large, uh, very active, uh, in, in the ways of, uh, community development and participating in, uh, in, in, in this community. Um, and bear with me for a second, because this is, this, what I'm gonna tell you is a bit different. Um, two weeks ago, we had an opportunity to meet the new Chief of Police, Ron Teachman, came in to, uh, introduce himself to the congregation, and has he has been doing that with most African-American churches that I know right now. Well, this particular day, you know, he, he's there, and, um, he has opportunity to speak at the end of, uh, at the end of the, uh, order services for two minutes, is what he was given by our pastor. At that time, um, Chief Teachman had opportunity to talk about where he had been, and, uh, some of the challenges that he's faced since leaving, uh, Boston and going overseas, but also talk about Frederick Douglass and his travels, and Frederick Douglass is from the same, um, from the same city that he's from, and that, you know, there was obviously some logical connection with the audience that was there. Uh, as the conversation progressed, uh, it turned into a conversation about, uh, different demographics within the city of South Bend, and even in a nation that are incarcerated at high levels, African-American males being one of the high, or the highest in United States of America, and probably here in South Bend, Indiana, and which all of these things are quite consistent, uh, because they're facts. Um, at that time, uh, Chief Teachman brought out a pair of shackles and displayed it to the, uh, entire, uh, congregation. I went afoul of that. It was offensive, it was completely out of line, and I, and, and I think there needs to be an apology, and, and also some, sort of, some sort of, uh, discipline. Reason being is that if you're dealing with an African-American population that is sensitive to their youth being incarcerated at higher rates, I don't think of bringing a pair of shackles into a sanctuary where people worship at is proper. That's number one. Number two, the respect factor of bringing a pair of shackles into a house of worship should never even cross a person's mind. Number three, how about taking a picture of Hitler inside of a Jewish synagogue? So, it, it's offensive, and, and it took me a while to digest what took place, and even try to make some understa, understanding about it, but in the day, it ended up in the same, like, level one with me. And now it's zero, because it's, it just blows my mind. We are elected officials, we are a service to this community, we have a high standard, a higher standard that we have to match up with. We have to be in a position where when things are brought up and talked about, we have to be able to look at things objectively and not do things that could be taken out of context or out of order. We, we, we don't, we don't have that, we don't have a latitude to mess up on that. But anything that has aggressive ads, what I just described, the tools, being brought into a house of worship to display whatever the point was, whatever the point was, was extremely offensive and out of line. And I, and when I talk about sensitive training, early this budget session with police officers, and having the opportunity to, uh, give them some sort of hiatus or some time off during, uh, a number of years of service, ensuring they come back refreshed, and making sure that mental health department was involved, I was being serious, I wasn't making a joke about it. The job that police officers, uh, have is a very, very stressful job, completely stressful, highly stressful, and I, and I value the commitment of being a police officer, those who are out there fighting every day, but we have to begin to look at these things a little bit more clearly and with a lot more sensiti, uh, sensitivity. That was out of line. So, I'm gonna refer that to Mr. Schmull. Obviously, uh, Chief Teachman is a, an appointment at the mayor's office, the council has no, no authority over who he appoints, all we have, uh, authority on the budget and, and the pay, that happens with each individual employee, but, uh, I, there, I, I don't know how to, to end this. I just think that it, it, it sucks. It's right up.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Seanun, we will proceed to privilege of the floor. This is a part of the council where you may address the council, it's not a give and take, it's your statement. If there is something specific, and let me repeat that, if you want us to follow up, there's forms on that table, if you wanna come up and talk, we won't follow up, if you want something followed up, but I want it signed to a committee, you need to fill out a form. You have three minutes, we need your name and address.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Anthony Davis, P O Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, to kinda touch on what Henry was just talking about, um, I understand, you know, we've got a new chief, he's not from here, and, uh, maybe they do things a little bit differently where he's from, and maybe in some of the places he was sent to do his job for Washington, they do things differently, but I took it very offensive, the remarks that he made yesterday regarding gun control. Uh, he made a comment, uh, I can't say verba, verbatim what it was, but something to be a fact, it's in the news that, um, people who buy these high-power rifles and high-capacity magazines don't go out and hunt, they only hunt humans. That, that is disgusting coming from the Chief of Police, especially in the news media. And I'm appalled by that. I, I would like for the council to take this and look at some of this information that I've compiled here on statistics, uh, murders and violent crimes that are, uh, you know, happen throughout our nation, there's one study in Chicago, one in Washington, some local things, that tell you how much gun violence there is. I mean, these people that are committing gun violence are not going to a gun store and buying their guns in a store legitimately, but they're putting it in their pocket, they're buying them on the streets, they're stealing them from rightful gun owners, so any of these gun regulations that they put on are just harming the innocent citizen who wants to protect themselves and their family. It's not gonna make a difference to the criminals, because they don't care what the law says. Also, on that same basis, we've got a mayor who is part of a Mayor's Against Illegal Guns Group, uh, apparently is what it's called. I, I was researching some of this, uh, on the internet, and I found an article that lists more than a dozen mayors who are in this group with Pete Buttigieg. All, all of these mayors that I've got listed here, you can look at the weather addresses and track this yourself, they are all convicted criminals, and they're convicted of any kind of crime from child, child pornography to extortion, all, all kinds of criminal activity, and they've all been convicted. These are the kind of people the mayor is depending on for answers, and these are the kind of people that are gonna control our weapons, that we're allowed to carry, to take care of our families. And the last thing I want you to look into, it's printed out here, is the vacant abandoned housing issue. Um, I do know that most of the houses that have been demolished in the past cost an average of about four thousand to forty-five hundred to demolish. For some reason, the mayor and his little coalition came up with a new figure of six thousand, so I'm just curious as to who's going to govern that six thousand per home for demolition, why the price is so much higher than it was six months ago, and how that these contracts are gonna be given out.
My name is Samuel Brown, I'm speaking on behalf of the City Council of Better Heaven, which in the five and a half hours' speech, South Bend, Indiana. I was reading the other day in the paper, I said, I read this paper because it depresses, but I was reading about how many police cars go to a certain entity, like whether it's a courtyard or we're on Jefferson Street, and it was showing the figure of how much this costs, and I started laughing. Uh, I ran a sports program called Mighty McQueen Somebody, uh, one of the many sports programs that's sitting out there in the Midwest, and I was called turn fourteen through up by a gentleman, and he was letting me know how many problems somebody was causing. Well, attend what you did, he let me know how much insurance I had to have, I got mine from Lord of Lemon, in case somebody got hurt. Also, what really shocked me was, they made me put on security, that I had to pay the shop there policeman, I couldn't get rid of cop, they paid this out of my pocket. So, if that courtyard or whatever entity, the D P S was going to concentrate, all you gotta do is find your owner, and said, you know what, you're putting loose this, we're gonna have you in crack go security, that you would have to pick up, and I shut it down, because I know, I went up to the fourteen through, explained the rules to me. So, that is not a brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Grumel. I have a home at nineteen nineteen South Carlisle Street in South Bend, and a city resident for over sixty years. I would like to commend Councilman Henry Davis on his concerns, and I'm here to help address that. I'd like to first of all welcome Chief Ron Teachman to the state of Indiana, considered the third pre-state in the United States by the George Mason University Study two thousand ten, behind South Dakota and New Hampshire. I also would like to voice concern about Chief Teachman's remarks against the Second Amendment when he spoke at a roundtable on W N I T TV yesterday. Now, I understand Chief Teachman is an appointment of Mayor Buttigieg, but both of these guys are anti-gun socialists liberals who have no idea of Indiana's firearms laws and rich history of self-defense. We have the oldest license to carry law in the world. Since eighteen sixty, residents of Indiana have been able to carry a firearm with a letter from their county sheriff. There was no state police till nineteen thirty-three. Each of Indiana's ninety-two counties have been doing this for a hundred and fifty-three years. Second point, we have the only lifetime license to carry a handgun in the world, in Indiana. I wish these two salient points to be a reminder to Mayor Buttigieg and the chief, that we carry guns in Indiana, we carry more guns in Indiana than any other state in the country, and we've been doing it long enough. Indiana has the lowest crime rate of any of the eight Great Lakes states. I'm a former South Bend policeman, I've been carrying a gun for almost forty-five years.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. In closing, I wish to remind the council that there is state law that prevents any local unit, village, town, city, county, from passing anything regarding the use, the carrying, the possession, the sale, the taxing of any firearms or ammunition in the state of Indiana. Wake up, read the law, President Deere has a copy of the Indiana statute regarding this, and the new Senate Bill two ninety-two, which gives punitive damages to anybody who's damaged by these laws that they wanna pass. We can't carry a gun in this building, and that's gonna be fought, and we're gonna get three times treble damages. Thank you.
My name is Tony Trinka, I live at one thirty-nine Camden Street, South Bend, Indiana, and, uh, I wanna let you all know that I appreciate your service to the city, but, uh, when I tell these meetings, and I've been accused, I don't know why, of being half-deaf, but, uh, when, when some of you people speak up there, I can't hear you over here, and, uh, it's aggravating, and I just wish that you'd lean into your microphone or something, I mean, I know when people get up there and speak, a lot of times they're way back, and, 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 that's just, uh, the public, but, you know, as, as fellow citizens, you know, and people that do this all the time, I, I would expect you to lean in and talk loud so we can hear you out here. Other than that, I'm satisfied so far. Thank you.
Uh, name is Joseph Wolfing, two four zero five, Hurstken Boulevard. So, I'm gonna read a couple of things, uh, in relation to, to, uh, Mr. Grumel. Article one, section thirty-two of the state constitution, the people shall have a right to bear arms, comma, for the defense of themselves and the state. Section thirty-two, the general assembly shall not grant to any citizen, comma, or class of citizens, comma, privileges or immunities, comma, which, comma, on the same terms, shall not equally belong to all citizens. Indiana Code, section thirty-five dash forty-seven, political subdivision regulation of firearms, ammunition, and firearm accessories prohibited. Except as provided in section four of this chapter, a political subdivision may not regulate one firearms, ammunition, and firearm accessories, ownership, possession, carrying, transportation, registration, transfer, and storage of firearms, ammunition, and firearm accessories, and commerce in and taxation of firearms, firearm ammunition, and firearm accessories. When we have appointed leaders make statements that are out of the bounds of logical conversation regarding the lawful ownership of private arms, I quote, "The Second Amendment is not absolute." Second quote, "And frankly, most people that have these assault rifles don't hunt, at least not for other than the human species." Our law enforcement agencies here in, in South Bend have assault rifles, have these type of weaponry. Are they hunting the American, the human species as well? When Teachman says these things, perhaps he's forgotten the fundamental nature of the Second Amendment.
One minute, sir.
For us, the citizen, an ability to defend ourselves, our families, and provide a natural right of self-defense, and ultimately, to organize a citizen militia, it needed, and to defend against a tyrannical government. Amen.
Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond. Mr. Grumel, you know, I've been with you a long time, you and your dad. City Councilboard members, you got this magazine here, you made it all the way to the national magazine in Washington, D.C. See that gun on there, Chief Teachman, Mr. Gun Walmart was selling. My concern is, I was in Walmart the other day, a kid I know is seventeen, I watched him go out the door with five boxes of bullets. In this magazine, it says Walmart's ammunition sales have troubled Brown since at least two thousand nine, when two teenagers shot lifted bullets from the local Walmart. It's still happening, this is two thousand thirteen, we got a problem. Teachman came in, they've been stopping cars, drunk drivers, but we still got shootings in the neighborhood. We still got things going on, and things still happening. I worked for the Grumel family, I grew up on Diamond Street with them, they carried guns every day, they policed the areas, they was with me as a Cub Scout, and things happened. Right place, right time, right reason, we can put South Bend back together. But if we don't bite down into Walmart, we gave them permission to do the things they're doing, but we didn't have nothing to bite back, or we can give them fines for things that's happened. I don't know how many more people got to be killed before we can narrow down what's going on in our community. As just one of the ministers, the things that's going on, it's really sad, it's hard, it's hard, Mr. Deere, to walk in and see it happen.
it's hard, it's a deal to walk in and see it happen. But things are happening, and people don't wanna get involved, and then they're hearing that they're gonna be fined if they call the police. No. I called the police three weeks ago, I got sideswiped, I was in a following, I'm not gonna say a high-speed chase, because I, I do have some sense, I followed them from the west side to the south side, thank God for Captain Rukowski back there. When I followed them and I called in, they asked me where the accident happened, I said in Martin Luther King, right in front door. She said, where are you at now? I said, I'm on my way to Diamond Street. She said, go home, don't follow me. As I began to turn off the porch to go home, Mr. Deere, the gentleman backed, backed into my truck and took off again. Anybody know me, I ain't always been a preacher, and I ain't never scared. I followed him all through South Bend, talking to Officer Cannon on the cell phone, and he giving directions from a radio. Eventually, the man is caught behind the church on Miami, he's a mobile meth lab. If you take the guns and the care from the people, then what happens to the city? And I'm gonna continue, if I can wake you up, Chief Teachman, if you don't know me, I'm gonna shake you up.